Anybody, this is all just going to start happening.
Yeah. Call us and order it.
Perfect. Okay, all right. I'm going to call this meeting, Special Meeting of the Buncombe County Commission, to order. Purpose is to conduct interviews with applicants for the Tourism Development Authority and the Civic Center Commission. We're not making any votes or decisions here today. We're just going to interview these folks who have applied for these two public boards. So, the first one is the Tourism Development Authority position, and the applicant is Brenda Durden. Brenda, thank you so much for taking some time to talk with us today and for your interest in serving on the Tourism Development Authority.
You are so. I'm having a bit of trouble hearing.
Okay, is this a little bit better? Brenda, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, great. Well, I was just saying, thank you for your interest in serving on the Tourism Development Authority Board. We appreciate you taking time to talk to us for a few minutes. So, we just have a few questions and should only take about 10 minutes. So, thank you so much for being with us.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, so, to just get started, could you just share a little bit with us? I mean, we have your application here, but just a little bit about your interest in serving on the TDA and any kind of experience and qualifications you want to share, along with your interest in serving.
Certainly. I've spent my entire life working in tourism. I'm a Buncombe County resident, and seeing our citizens prosper and being a part of helping people develop their careers has been something very important to me through my life. I have worked with my current company for 30 years and had positions prior to that. So, I've certainly seen Asheville and Buncombe County in really good times and really bad times. And it's real important to me to help us back to the good times. I feel very strongly that we have to be a good voice for our tourism employees and all of the other businesses in our area. We've got to do the right thing, and it means a lot to me. One of the cornerstones of our company has been our community service and the things we've been able to do as a hospitality community. And I want to be a part of anything bigger that we can do to make that happen. It's just a passion. I think you are either, just like you all are, you're either meant to serve or you're not. And I do feel strongly that my passion in life and my mission in life is to serve others. And that's really part of my desire to be a part of TDA.
All right, thank you so much, Brenda. Commissioner Belcher?
Yeah. Brenda, Commissioner Belcher, hope you're having a good day. I have just one question for you. I think you answered, may have answered some of it, but, you know, how do you see in your role meeting the needs and communication throughout the entirety of Buncombe County?
Our, in my company and my role, I deal with all levels of team members, and I'm very hands-on. I have a really good grasp on what people are facing and what people are doing. I've been a part of the Asheville-Buncombe Hotel Association, so I've, I see that part of it. I see many aspects, and I feel like that makes me a good candidate because I'm able to take that. I had the good fortune of a strengths assessment, and my top strength is a creator. Now, let me say, that does not mean I can do more than draw a circle. I certainly cannot. But being a creator, you have to pick things apart and fully understand them before you can make decisions and move forward. And I think that is a strength that I bring to the table that can help because I want to fully understand all sides of all things before I make decisions and suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so Brenda, I have a question, and it's, you know, it's really a question that ultimately the state legislature has to address because obviously the Buncombe County hotel occupancy policy is based on the state legislation. It's not something that the county commission decides or the TDA Board decides. But it's, you know, it's a topic, as I'm sure you know, of strong community interest. And so, I just wanted to ask you if you would, you know, share any thoughts that you have about your, you know, perspective on this question, the kinds of issues that, you know, we're often asked about relate to potentially changing the formula for allocation of the funds. As you know, with part of it's invested in advertising, part of it's invested in community projects. Currently, those community projects all have to be capital projects. There's some discussion about maybe opening that up to provide more flexibility for investing in kind of operational needs as well as infrastructure. You know, we also hear from folks who are interested in how the public can have input on these, you know, these investment decisions in the future, which could go to the composition of the board. Right now, of course, it's primarily hotel industry folks who are on the board. There's been some discussion about perhaps broadening that out for more community perspectives on that, too. So, would you mind kind of just sharing your perspective on those issues, even though neither, you know, none of us, you know, ultimately, the legislature has to decide this. But I think folks do look to the TDA as the group that works on that, you know, implementation of that policy so much.
Well, I certainly do not think it's the role of TDA to try to change legislation. However, in being a part of the Asheville-Buncombe Hotel Association, I certainly am in favor of trying to make some adjustments, as the rest of the group was. I do think that there's room for a lot of conversation. We are in a very different place than we have been in the past, and it's time to have some really open discussion about what that should look like. I do not think that the same thing over and again is necessarily the answer. But, you know, but that's a group decision. I feel strongly about everybody gets a voice, and we need to have that opportunity to look at what does our future look like? It's certainly, we all know, today is not what six months ago was, and it's not going to be anytime quickly. So, we have to match our efforts to our current situation and be able to work together to find a solution that feels good for everyone.
All right. Well, Brenda, thank you so much. Do any other commissioners have any questions for Brenda this afternoon? All right. Well, Brenda, thank you again. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us at this time?
I really thank you all. I hope that your families and you all are well and healthy, and I do hope you will consider me to be a part of TDA. As I said before, it's been my whole life to work in tourism, and I feel very strongly that we have to work together to get our community back on a solid ground, and I really would love to be a part of it. And I thank you all very much for your consideration.
All right, well, thank you so much. Thank you for your interest in this. You know, as you said, you know, the, this has been a very tough year for, you know, for really the whole community, the whole economy, the whole country. And, you know, the tourism part of our economy has been hit, you know, it's harder, harder than anything. And, you know, we're all hopeful that we're going to move beyond this COVID-19 health, you know, challenge in the coming months and that, as you said, you know, the way things look in six months from now will be very different than the way they look today. And we're all interested in how we can support, you know, bringing the economy back to a stronger place. But I appreciate your thoughts on all these questions, you know, as we do get hopefully back to something more like normal. I think some of these, these policy questions are going to be important questions for us to, I think, work together to come up with a, you know, a sense for what makes, you know, the best use of those resources going forward. So, I really appreciate hearing your thoughts on that, and thank you for taking time to talk to us today.
Thank you so much. You guys take care.
All right, you, too. Bye-bye. All right. So, Rick is having difficulties with Zoom, so I'm going to call him. Okay. And you'll just have to hear it.
Chairman, who?
Yes, sir. Jasmine, can you hear okay? Hey, Jasmine, can you, can you hear?
Hello?
That's Rick.
Hello?
Hey, Rick, this is Brownie Newman. How are you?
Good, how are you, Brownie?
Hey, good, good. I'm here with all the other commissioners. Our staff have indicated you might be having trouble with the connecting via Zoom, so I think we're just going to do a phone interview, if that's okay with you.
Great. I'm down, out of town on my jobs location. I may just not have good service.
Can you hear clear?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, Jasmine, was that you speaking?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear everybody good.
I'm actually watching on Facebook.
Okay.
I'm following along that way.
Okay, perfect. We were just checking. All right, Rick, sorry, we were checking in with Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrara, who is also calling in for the meeting and listening in on Facebook. So, hey, thank you for taking time to talk to us today about your interest in the Civic Center Commission. We have just a few questions for you, so it should just take only probably less than 10 minutes. But would you like to start off by just sharing a little bit about your interest in serving on the Civic Center Commission and any, you know, kind of relevant experience and qualifications you bring to that work?
I'm getting a bad echo. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, could you just share your reasons for being interested in serving on Civic Center Commission?
Oh, because I've just been involved at the Civic Center for a few years, volunteering and helping with events, doing the coat checks for the Christmas jams and doing, working with Dimples, the sports commission on all the sports events. Did the tennis and all of those when we had the ladies come in for the tennis tournament. And I just enjoy, you know, everybody down there is just so great to work with. The staff is, you know, very friendly and kind, but I just enjoy volunteering down there, you know, being involved.
All right, great. Commissioner Belcher, I believe, has a question.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, just don't talk as loud and I don't get the echo back.
How's that? Is that better? Is that better?
I can hear, I can hear you now.
Okay, good. So, the question I have about the Civic Center, I want to get your thoughts on, you know, expanding its outreach and having, you know, more variety, particularly in the music industry, but, you know, what your thoughts are in, you know, bringing additional, you know, music and shows that, you know, reach out to a wider base.
I guess I would see doing, you know, some more smaller events and maybe including youth events. People that maybe feel that they aren't being looked, you know, like the people of color events. You know, I guess more broad, different kind of events that would be appealing to more people rather than just, you know, a regular rock and roll show. You know, I've done a lot of comedy events, poetry slams, stuff like that that are within, you know, family-friendly events.
Sure.
Nothing off-color.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You know, the sporting events are always a big hit when, you know, after we get past this COVID mess.
Yeah, thank you.
The tennis really went, was really fun because we had all those kids down in the basement and did all those activities with them, and that was just a big bang. That was really fun.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Rick, we wanted to ask you a question related to future improvements to the Civic Center and Thomas Wolfe. And, you know, what are your thoughts on that? You know, there's been a proposal put forward. A lot of it's focused on the Thomas Wolfe side, but, you know, up to, I think it was $100 million. But, you know, and there's all kinds of incremental improvement projects that have been done over the years and are on the list of things that people would like to see done. Could you just talk a little bit about what, you know, the Civic Center Commission makes recommendations to the city council? And sometimes the county plays a role in that. So, just talk a little bit about what your views are on, you know, taking care of the facilities, how much, you know, what kinds of investments should be made? You know, what's your, what are your thoughts on those questions?
Isn't there going to be some upgrades to Thomas Wolfe? I was thinking there was something in the works there.
Well, there was.
On the Thomas Wolfe side? Has that already been, has upgrades already been done there?
Well, there were, there were some proposals made that were, you know, really big-ticket, you know, like $100 million plans to completely redo the facility. So, but that's just an idea at this point. I don't, you know, it's just kind of a concept, you know.
Wasn't they supposed to put in like a big screen in the main Civic Center area? Like a new scoreboard or something like that? I was thinking that was in the works.
I mean, honestly, I'm not familiar with the details of it, so. But do you have any thoughts you'd share about, you know, what you, you know, what's the right approach to taking care of these facilities going forward?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. I hadn't thought about that much. I'd have to think about it and get back to you. I just really don't have an answer for that one. I mean, the facility is in pretty good shape, I thought. I don't know if it does need some upgrades. Maybe the sound system, I thought it got upgraded, but I wasn't sure about that.
Okay. All right, fair enough. Just, you know, we just wanted to ask. Commissioners, are there any other questions that you would like to ask Mr. Swilling while we have him with us today? All right. Well, Rick, thank you again. I don't think we have any other questions. So, like I said, we're just doing some brief interviews with the applicants. We appreciate you taking time to talk with us for a few minutes, and so, thank you for all the great work you've already put into the Civic Center, and we appreciate your interest in serving on the Board.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you reaching out to me.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, the next applicant is Shay Brown.
She has not logged on yet, but she was here about 30 minutes ago, and I told her to come back at 12:30.
Okay.
Got a couple minutes.
She hasn't logged in yet. We're a couple minutes early, I think, so we'll just wait for just a moment and see if she logs back on. What time does the Early Childhood Education Group start? Okay.
So, the $100 million is something that's been thrown around. That is not?
Yeah, it's not been, I understand. I mean, I mostly just read about it in the newspaper, but from what I read, I don't think it's been, I don't think that proposal's been endorsed by the city council, but there's been a group that's been working on it. I think they've got some, you know, consultants who have been thinking about what could be there, and they came up with this concept for really redoing the facility, lowering the floor, expanding the stage, expanding, you know, what you need to do to get in and out of the facility. So, it's almost, it's keeping the shell of the building, but it's almost kind of redoing, redoing everything else.
Looked like something out of Vegas.
Yeah.
It really did. I mean, it was over the top, and as a member of the TDA, I hadn't heard a word about it. It was kind of, hey, they're, we're going to have a report, and, you know, so, well, I'm going to go. I went in and went, holy cow, where'd this come from? And, I don't know, it kind of reminded me a little bit like the conversation of, on the Performing Arts Center, you know, there's a, there's been a group that's been pushing for that. I hadn't heard from them in a couple of years. Around you, you're probably real familiar with that.
The idea's been out there for a long time, yeah.
Holy cow. I mean, they were wanting to do like a peace center, and the reality is, the peace center is only an hour away, and people are just going to go there. You know, we're not a, we're not a Charlotte. We're not, don't have enough population to be able to pull off some of this stuff. Not some of it, we can't, but.
You know, I was there, so was Joe, but from the people around me, Joe, when they were talking.
Hi.
I was dead on the ride.
Hey, hey, good afternoon, Shay, how are you?
I'm great. How are you? Sorry about earlier.
No, no problem, no problem. Thank you for taking time to talk to the Board of Commissioners this afternoon about your interest in serving on the Civic Center Commission.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have just a couple of questions, so this shouldn't take real long. But to get us started, would you just share a little bit of information about your interest in serving on the Civic Center Commission and any experience and qualifications you kind of bring to the table that would be relevant to that?
Sure. So, I have lived in Asheville for 20 years, and I own Shay Brown Events, which is an event management group. We do corporate events, weddings, just about any event that you can think of. We also have a sister company, which is called S.E. Management Group, and we manage 13 venues in the Asheville and surrounding area where we host events. I'm also the festival director for Chow Chow this year and next year. And, you know, I'm very familiar with doing large-scale events. Organization is very important to me, and I just really think that with the growth of the Civic Center and, you know, I think the vision of where it's headed, I think I could contribute to not only a community aspect, but also a development aspect as far as what style and types of, you know, national events I think we could bring into the area. I do a lot of conferences that are outside of the Asheville area, too, and I would love to see some of those, you know, brought into, into Asheville. So, that's a little bit about my background. Does that help?
Great.
Yeah, Shay, Commissioner Belcher, good afternoon. I just had a question for you, and I think you hit on a little bit, you know, what your thoughts were in being able to bring more, from a music venue standpoint, to be able to reach out to, to, you know, more genres since we're in the western part of the county, the mountains, and, you know, and have a lot of other, other. I have particular interest in, you know, bluegrass and southern gospel, and, you know, those can be in big events. But, you know, other, other options that the Civic Center might have in increasing its outreach and its attendance, just your thoughts on that?
So, I absolutely think that there's room for growth there. I work with several national companies booking entertainment for other events that I do. I have a roster of performers that, you know, I could help pull from. I'm happy to consult on any of that, but we have a really nice demographic here in the Asheville area with entertainment, recording, you know, being able to bring in entertainment, I think, both on a local as far as like opening acts that are growing.
Sure.
Within this region, and then also national acts. I really think, I do a lot of events in Nashville, Tennessee as well, and every time I'm there, everybody's always talking about how they're trying to get to Asheville. So, you know, I definitely think there is room for growth there.
Yeah, I'd also, you know, appreciate your comment on local. You know, a lot of, a lot of national brands and, you know, groups and such, they drive out, you know, locals. And you can actually, I mean, you can have local days at just about anything and bring in local artists and probably pack a place out if it's done right. But anyhow, I'll get on and run on that, and I don't want to. I appreciate your, appreciate your answer. Thanks.
Absolutely.
So, Shay, what's your, you know, there was a proposal back in February to invest $100 million in renovating the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium. What's your perspective on that?
So, I definitely think that there needs to be some updates and remodeling to the Thomas Wolfe. In the, on the same hand, I also feel like with all of the, with the size of the Thomas Wolfe and the size of the Civic Center, I just really feel like that needs to be, it need to be looked at hand in hand because I also think there needs to be some upgrades to the Civic Center itself, not just the Thomas Wolfe. I have done some work at a school forum, I cannot say that word, in Nashville, Tennessee, and looking at, I came to the presentation that they did for the Thomas Wolfe, and looking at the presentation and the development, I mean, it's a beautiful structure. I was a little concerned about a couple of, just visually, when I was looking at it. Having talked to Bruce, the director, at that museum when they did their remodel, there were a couple of things that I saw in there that, you know, he had brought to our attention when we were doing that remodel that kind of came up when I was looking at the architectural layout of everything. But I definitely think it's needed. I think it will only contribute to the size of events we can have. And also, when you look at pairing that over, like, I don't know if there's a way to also contribute some of that money to the Civic Center, but there are some, I think, structural improvements that could be done there. And I don't know, you know, the background of, if those are hand in hand or if they are two completely different, you know, venues that are looking at money. But that's, that would be something that I would really consider.
Okay. And do you think that that's, I mean, I guess just my follow-up question, and, you know, if you're on the Board of the Civic Center Commission, I mean, in a way, your job is, of course, to advocate for it and, you know, think about the best future for it. I mean, I think a lot of people think that spending that much money on the Civic Center probably doesn't make sense in light of other community priorities. What are your thoughts?
Well. I haven't. You're putting me on the spot. What, I agree that it's a lot of money, but I also think, you know, in light of COVID and everything that has happened in the Asheville area, you know, in the last six months, it kind of changes that outlook and demographic of things. I think it has for everybody. You know, all of my businesses have pretty much been shut down, and we've pivoted to, you know, handing out food and helping the community. And I absolutely see that that could, needs to be part of what they're doing and what would be done. But also, if we're looking at the future, which is what we all need to look toward, I definitely think that it is needed, and until I really see the, you know, the backend of cost and how things, you know, are being presented, I don't know what the actual cost will be. But I do think that, that amount of money, if it was split again between both doing some improvements for Thomas Wolfe and also for the Civic Center, I think it's definitely needed.
Okay.
If we're looking at a bigger, you know, five to 10-year plan.
Okay. Well, Shay, I think you've answered the questions we had. Is there anything else you would like to share with the Board that we haven't asked about?
No, not at all. I just am very interested in, you know, where the development of the Civic Center is headed, and I hope you will, you know, take my experience and my background into consideration. And if you have any further questions for me, please don't hesitate to reach out, and I'd be happy to answer anything for you.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you so much for your interest in serving on the Board and for taking time to talk to us today.
Thank you.
All right, take care. All right, and the last applicant we're going to be speaking with is Josh Battenhorst. Josh, are you with us?
I am.
All right.
Should I turn on my video?
Good afternoon, how are you?
I'm doing well. Should I turn on my video or not? I don't know.
So, we don't see you, we just see like, yeah, no, we can't see.
Okay.
Yeah, if you'd like, if you'd like to turn on the video, that'd be great. You don't have to, but if you'd like to, that'd be fine.
Says I'm unable to, you can't start your video because the host has stopped, is what it says.
Okay, give us just a second. I think they're working on it.
I was wondering why the other, why Shay wasn't.
And who am I speaking to?
All right, hey, there you are. Josh, thanks for taking time to talk to us this afternoon. This shouldn't take long. We just have a few questions. We're asking the applicants for the. This shouldn't take long, we just have a few questions we're asking the applicants for the Civic Center Commission. Would you like to start off just sharing a little bit about your interest in serving on the board? And any kind of, you know, experience and qualifications relevant to that?
Sure. Well, first, who, well, who am I, who am I speaking to who's in the room?
Yeah, yeah, fair question. A fair question. So all the members of the county commission are here. Commissioner Jasmine Beach Farrar couldn't be physically here, but she's listening in as well. And this interview is being broadcast live on Facebook Live as well. So there's probably some members of the community just watching, listening in as well.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for having me and thank you for being here. And for, for those of you watching at home, I hope you enjoy and I hope I perform admirably. I am a theater artist by trade and by training, but also a business person. I have an MBA from Wake Forest and I run a business, a local business here in town called Bright Star Touring Theater. We are a children's theater. And I also have been serving on the board of the Asheville Arts Council for about six years now. And so, you know, my, my, I think that what I would offer to the board is, you know, I'm a longstanding resident of the county. I'm not, I wasn't originally born here, but I kind of got here as soon as I could. I came here straight out of college and I've been here since 2002. You know, really enjoyed a lot of the programming that has been at the Civic Center. And I've enjoyed the concerts and the sports events. And, and I am somewhat concerned that as time has gone on, some of the arts programming has gotten, has, it seems like arts programming has gone to the wayside a little bit, as opposed to, you know, live rock concerts and sports and things. And, and I think that the Civic Center has the opportunity to be a very integral part of our community that is enjoyed by a much wider group. So I, I can envision a space that serves community artists, that serves as for conferences, that serves for all sorts of constituents in our community, not just visitors from out of town and not just people who are coming in for the night or for a Christmas gym or whatever happens to be the case. And so I would be joining the board with those things in mind. First is, you know, is, does it make a smart, is it, can we make a smart business case for increased expenditures on a Civic Center, especially during the, during the time that we're currently at? And how do we plan for that? And how do we roll it out? And how do we get community buy-in if that's something that, that we need to develop? Or is it, or is it already there? So I've got quite a bit of experience from my work as an artist. And I'm also an educator. I worked at Artspace Charter School for many years before working here with Bright Star. And I would like to see an educational component into whatever the Civic Center sees itself being and making itself available for local schools, local public schools, private schools, you know, so that they can have access to some of the things that we bring to it as well. Because I, I don't think of any of the things that the city or the county does as being separate from the community that it serves. So I would be very hopeful to see that, that the Civic Center becomes an even better utilized asset to, to the whole community.
Hey Josh, Commissioner Belcher, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Can you just, you touched on a little bit, expand on, you know, how you would get the Civic Center to, to attract a wider variety of acts, is not necessarily the right word, but, you know, music genres and, I mean, you know, we're in a corner of the state that can reach out to, you know, four or five states very easily and bring, you know, whether it's, you know, you know, bluegrass, southern gospel, you know, all kinds of different things that, you know, might not necessarily be the biggest draw, you know, in, in town, but might draw, you know, regionally. And I just want to see your thoughts on maybe reaching out in some different genres and things.
Well, I, I don't know that my, that's my area of expertise, quite honestly. I think we would need to be leaning on, you know, I think there, that should be the job of a person, who is, who is well versed in, in the music industry in particular. And that they, you know, are a booking agent and they understand what is, what is popular with our community, with our community. You know, it's more plugged into it than that. That's, you know, I would not think that the job of a person on, on this particular council would be to, to manage the programming. That said, if we are going to be investing in this space and improving the space and improving the entire Civic Center and make, you know, I can, I can certainly see that there's a lot of space that goes unused on most days of the weeks, you know?
Sure.
And, and so what I would be interested in is how can we creatively use this, make the space usable, make the space accessible so that it's not just a special event thing that, you know, but it's also, it's actually a practical part of the fabric of our community. And what that looks like, you know, I, it really depends on, on how we roll out our plans and what guidance we give to whatever architects and whatever designers we involve in the process. But I would, but I, but I would be a voice that would say, hey, are we creating, you know, small, smaller spaces within the large space that perhaps local, you know, theater groups or local artists or, you know, or maybe acts that would draw a smaller crowd, but still a substantial crowd, could use so that we're not, you know, wasting any, any space within the, in the, in the area? You know, I'm sure it's a complicated picture, you know? But I would, but that, but I would, I would, I would defer to someone with more expertise in programming to figure out how to get those acts here.
Well, I appreciate you getting into the, you know, the, the local is, is very important. And making sure you have programming throughout the week is, is, is very important for that facility. So thanks for your answer.
Sure.
All right, Josh. Hey, so, so one question I wanted to ask is, you know, back in February, which seems like a long time ago now, I know, for all of us. The, but there was a proposal that was rolled out that recommended investing a hundred million dollars in renovations to, I think it was mostly on the Thomas Wolfe side of the facility, but a hundred million dollars. So what's your, what's your perspective on that proposal?
Well, that's a big, that's a, that's a lot of money in, for a small town. But we have to, but I don't think that there's any reason to not set high goals. And so I would be very interested to be talking with the, the city and the county and the, the development staff that, that rolled out that number to say, well, you know, how would we, how do we create that? And then, more importantly, if we're going to be creating that funding through purely tax revenue, you know, we need to, we need to absolutely ensure that the community has access to the space. So that it's not just a, so I can see a hundred million dollars being used on a, on such a space when you think about all of the amount of funding that goes into athletic facilities or, you know, school buildings and physical plants and things like that. And I can see it being a valuable investment, not just for the tourism industry, but also, but I want to make sure that it's not just for the tourism industry alone. And it's not just about bringing attractions to, to town, but also for being, you know, day to day usability of the space. And I honestly think that it could probably recoup some of its own investment through earned income if we, if we're smart about how you, how we can utilize that space on the day to day basis. You know, we, I don't want to see a big chunk of downtown being taken up by a building that sits empty for most of the, of the work week. That doesn't make sense to me. But if we find a way to, to, to create mixed use, to create, to create value for, you know, whether it's classrooms or, or, or meetings or public meetings, or, so we create value for a variety of different civic interests, then yeah, I think that that could be a wise investment. So it's a big number, but also, who knows what a hundred million dollars is going to be worth in five years? Because inflation is going up and, you know, there's so many economic indicators. So who even knows if that's the right number? So I do think that we, we have a responsibility to figure out first what, what's the, what's the use of the building? And what's the, what's the value? Not just pure in terms of pure return on investment in terms of dollars and cents. I do think we need to try to figure out how to balance that in return somehow. But also in terms of like, you know, we've, I, I can think of this as, as almost as an infrastructure investment. Is, if this place houses, you know, some parts of, it could, maybe it houses some parts of government. Maybe it houses certain, you know, facilities and maintenance people and offices and things, if that makes sense. So I really think it's about, you know, making sure that that space becomes used and doesn't just, it doesn't just sit there and then come open on the weekends, you know? I, I want to, I'd like to see it used creatively. And I'd like to see it, you know, we, there could be classes and lessons and all sorts of different things that are happening within the, in the Civic Center building that aren't necessarily events, is my, is my opinion.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, are there any other questions? All right, Josh, thank you for your interest in serving on the Civic Center Commission. I think we're going to make these decisions this evening at our meeting later, later in the day. So thanks for, thanks for your interest in serving. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us that we haven't asked you about?
No, not at all. I appreciate your time as well. Thank you.
All right, take care. Have a great afternoon.
You too. Bye bye.
All right. So that completes the interviews we're going to be doing this afternoon. Commissioners, I think we're going to plan on making some decisions this evening. Any further discussion before we adjourn? All right, we're, we're adjourning this special meeting.